All right, good evening. Today is Thursday, January 18th. We'll now call the City Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Item number two is roll call of council. We do have a quorum of council who's here. Item number three is our pledge. We will have our pledge led by Jennifer Thomas Gomez, Director of Development Services.
Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. So, item number four are presentations and recognition. 4A is a recognition of Daniel Stewart, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, for being awarded the 2023 Recreational Professional of the Year. So we have a presentation by Councilmember Anthony Marulus.
Danielle, you gave it away, man. You told her what the award was. Come on up.
As she comes up, I am pleased to present this recognition and congratulate Danielle Stewart. I did a little research on you today, found out you went to Clemson, all this cool stuff. But let me give everyone else some background. Danielle has been with Missouri City, Texas for over five years. She started as a recreation specialist. She then got promoted to Recreation Manager, and thereafter she got promoted to Recreation Superintendent. Today, she's our Assistant Director of Parks Recreation. Tomorrow, she'll be a District City Councilmember. But in all honesty, last month Danielle was recognized by the Texas Recreation and Parks Society for the 2023 Professional of the Year. So let's give her an applause. Danielle, you're a great leader. Your efforts to enhance our parks, our community, is greatly appreciated. I've got a lot of great notes here, but I'm just going to go to the point and say, we're very fortunate to have you. It's you as a leader, it's you as the Parks Department that makes us the award-winning Parks Department, and I can't say enough to say thank you on behalf of this whole city. Thank you.
Okay, so now the main reason why you all are here, besides our meeting, we have our item 4B is administer oath of office to Police Chief Brandon Harris. So... All right, so... Can you have, you have your family come up here?
Which family?
Well, I would say the immediate family. Well, as, as they're coming up here, as they're coming up here, I do want to let all of you know that, that this has been a long process our city manager and our team went through. Now, while he's being sworn into office, I would like to ask the city manager, Angel Jones, to join me up here, if she will. And y'all know that I only have one vote. It's true. It takes all of us to make that appointment and give the concurrences for the, to the city manager to, to hire our chief. So, without further ado, I would like to ask the council members, and by the way, it was a 7-0 unanimous vote to, to support Brandon Harris. So I will ask my colleagues to come out here. Was that really applause for the council, or was that still for Brandon? All right, Brandon, so I get to do this. So raise your right hand. Stand next to your dad. So raise your right hand, repeat after me. I...
Aye.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of...
Of the office of...
Chief of Police...
Chief of Police.
For the city of Missouri City, Texas...
For the city of Missouri City, Texas.
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States...
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. So for the last nine months, correct? Nine months, Brandon has been serving as an interim Chief of Police for us, and he's, his current role was the Assistant Chief of Police for City of Missouri City. So, I know that all of you read his bio in the Facebook pages and, and all others, but I just want to say a few things. Chief Brandon Harris began his career with Missouri City Police Department as a Reserve Police Officer in 1995. Chief Harris has been a part of our city and witnessing the transformation and growth of Missouri City and leading law enforcement agency. His service has been particularly crucial during a time when our municipality became one of the fastest-growing and most diverse cities in Fort Bend County. We are confident that his leadership will continue to uphold the highest standard of integrity, professionalism, and service within the Missouri City Police Department. Under his guidance, we are certain that our law enforcement agency will continue to thrive and serve our community with distinction. Please join me in welcoming Chief Harris as our ninth chief since the city's been incorporated. Please welcome Chief Harris to say a few words. Congratulations.
Well, first of all, Mayor, Council, City Manager, thank you for the trust you've given me in appointing me to this position. And I would tell you, I'm dedicated to this department and this city. I promise you that. And the officers, to the officers, thank you for the support you've given me and the civilian staff. Sorry, the support you've given me over the 28 years I've been with the city, but especially the last nine months as interim chief, and I'm up here because of you, and I won't let you down. And my support staff, our support staff, support unit, my family, I didn't mean to call you staff. Wow. I can't recover from that, but thank you for the support. Thank you for the love and the support you've always given me. I truly appreciate it. And we have a great department. We have an exceptional officers, great civilian employees who are all dedicated to this city, and we have such a supportive community, and I could not be in a better place than right here, and I appreciate it.
I understand that we have some elected officials who are here also. If you are here, can you raise your hand?
Stand up.
Stand up, please. So we have Fort Bend ISD, Shirley Rose Gilliam, trustee. Where's Judge Basera? Judge Kristen Basera? There he is. And we have Constable Daryl Smith of Precinct Two. And I think we'll just end it with this. We have had the pleasure of having Brandon for nine months done a remarkable job. As Missouri City, some of you already know that we have our, we have our civil service, where our unit is part of that, and in conjunction with working with our POA and working with our department, we're just grateful to, to be able to move forward in such a positive way with our department. Just like all of you know that every agency's out there in the nation is suffering with hiring people, and we're also working towards with that. And I love Chief's comments towards us that he's also looking at helping to do whatever we can to move our, our forward. Number one thing that the city of Missouri City residents will tell you, the number one thing, it's not about the business growth or anything like that, is that they love their police. And the community policing here in Missouri City, as long as I can go back to 2007 and during that time, it has been stellar and is continuing to do so. So with this appointment, I want to thank, and on behalf of my colleagues, thank each and every one of you who are serving our city. We thank you so much from the bottom of our heart. Thank you. So, if there's no objection on council, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. So you all can have pictures with the newest Chief of Police, Brandon Harris. Thank you all.
Did we get one first?
Yeah. Okay, item, we're back on at 7:04 PM. Okay, item number five, our public comments. The Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
All right, thank you. Item number six, our staff report, 6A City Manager Report, Angel Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Another opportunity to recognize staff right now. I would like to demonstrate my appreciation for all the staff that worked tirelessly through the winter event that we just had, and anyone that's in the room or any present that worked through this, through the winter event, please stand up so that you can be recognized. I know our Public Works people might be... They did a tremendous job in ensuring our roads were prepared and ensuring our residents and stakeholders remain safe. They shut our facilities down to avoid any bursted pipes. They did everything they needed to do to ensure that we were prepared. So I would be remiss without mentioning that tonight. Moving on, I would like to provide an overview of the consent items that are on the agenda tonight. All of the items are budgeted, starting with item B. $280,000 is for basic uniforms and ballistic vests for police. Item C is a purchase of six vehicles for Public Works and Parks and Recreation at an amount not to exceed $334,000. Item D represents the purchase of 13 public safety vehicles in an amount not to exceed Item E is a return item. You approved this item unanimously last meeting, and this is regarding the abandonment of a drainage easement for the Arcadia subdivision that is no longer needed. One of the announcements I would like to, to make is, starting today, actually, the city and Fort Bend ISD are in partnership around a mentorship program. We had a high stu-, high school students start today from Hightower. So we're mutually working towards the goal of helping students to be successful, as well as the Selfish Initiative, which is to introduce them to city government so they can be our future leaders of tomorrow. So that's something that's in the works. And the last thing I want to mention, we just mentioned Danielle, and the reason why she's so exceptional is Danielle, under the leadership of Donnie, the city is about to receive another $750,000 grant based on... Based on their successful writing of the grant for Stamo Park. This will help supplement the funds that we currently have, and staff is just doing a tremendous job in seeking alternative funding and ensuring we have adequate funds to do all we can for the residents and stakeholders of this community. So with that, that ends my report, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number seven, our consent agenda. I see there's a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Marulus. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number eight are public hearings and related actions. 8A zoning and public hearing and ordinance.
8A is a public hearing to receive comments for or against the permanent zoning of land within Sienna Municipal Utility District Number Two, from SD Suburban District to SD Suburban District, R1 Single Family Residential District, R2 Single Family Residential District, R4 Patio Cluster Residential District, LCO Local Commercial Office District, and CF Community Facilities District, and to the extent such zoning deviates from the future land use and character map of the comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment.
Thank you. I'll now go ahead and open the public hearing for this item, 8A1. City Secretary, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, no further comments. We'll now go ahead and close 8A1. Item 8A2.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, establishing zoning regulations for certain annexed tracts of land, regulating and restricting the use, size, height, and density of buildings and other structures, the percentage of lots that may be occupied, the size of yards, and other open spaces, the density of population, and the location and use of building, structures, and land for trade, industry, residences, and other purposes on said annexed tracts of land, depicting said annexed tracts of land affected thereby, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
All right, thank you. We do have a presentation by Jennifer Thomas Gomez, Director of Development Services.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. And just for background on this case, as you know, Sienna M2 area annexed into the city in August. Once it was annexed into the city, it was classified suburban district, which is a holding agricultural zone until permanent zoning can be applied. So what this action will do is apply permanent zoning, matching up the land uses that exist that are already developed as best as possible with our existing zoning districts. Those zoning districts were read by Joyce and the Ordinance. They include the SD Suburban District for a lot of the levee areas, some of the golf court, or some of the drainage facilities, utilities, R1, R2, R4, which are all single family residential districts, matching up with how that area has developed. LCO for the limited commercial that are out there, the daycare facility, and a limited commercial at the intersection of State Bank Trace and Sienna Parkway, as well as community facilities for the school location, as well as the Club Sienna location as well. This does match the land use plan that was part of the Sienna Development Agreement, as well as, again, how that area has been constructed, and that's what's proposed to you in the draft ordinance.
We have Councilmember, recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation. Relative to the proposed zoning and it being a part of the land use plan in that area per Sienna, as you said, have we thought through the kinds of entities that we want to actually be there? I mean, I know that the land use plan is dated, and so I know we've discussed and talked about a revision of our comprehensive plan and zoning, and we haven't, I don't know when we're going to have those discussions. So I just wanted to know, are we just doing what was proposed many years ago and just kind of following suit? Or have we really given some thought as to kind of how we want that, that area to, to develop? I was looking at some of the protest letters, of course, that were part of the package, and of course, they were talking about some of the things they didn't want in the area, but, you know, such as apartments and things of that nature. I know, you know, people want green space, but, you know, they have every right to, to develop. But I just, once we, once we approve this, then we're opening it up for anyone that fits in that zoning classification to build whatever fits in that zoning classification there. I just want to know, has staff given any true insight? This is the first time I'm seeing that this is going to be implemented, and I just want to make sure that we're not just approving something that's going to allow for development of stuff that may not be suitable for that area.
Sure, and that's a great question. It's going to be a little bit different with this area because 99% of it's already developed. So the zoning that's proposed is zoning that matches basically what is on the ground today, and what this allows for is, you know, if someone does a home improvement, or if they have an event at Club Sienna, that it gives them the permissions, protection under zoning to continue those uses as they, they have done. So when they pull permits, they would pull permits in accordance with the zoning district that's applied to the property. There's very little out there right now, if anything, that has not been developed for a use. So all of the zoning that is being proposed today would just allow for what's already developed to continue.
So with, thank you, with that little bit that is left, there's still the potential to put something there that may not be...
Not really, because there's not, because when I say a little bit, it, there's, I don't, I'm, can't ima-, there's not much in that area that has not been developed. And so I know you can't really see it on the map that's included there, but most everything is either drainage facility, levee, golf course, the open space has already been dedicated for a purpose. Pretty much all of the land contained within the boundaries has already been plotted and identified for a specific use. So in this case, what you're doing, you're not, you know, zoning is going to run with the land, so obviously, you know, if uses change over, over time, the zoning runs with the land, but what this zoning is, is matching it with what it's already basically been developed for.
All right, well, thank you for that. Recognizing Councilmember Marulus.
So Jennifer, I mean, I think it's important that we understand that this really protects us by going from SD to the zoning, and that's critical. My question is, in the presentation, it says LC-0. Is there any, does that mean that it's LC-1 all the way till 4, or is it actually starting off at 0?
And I think, and this may pair with your question as well. So the LCO is, the O stands for office, and so it's one of our, our most limited commercial zoning. So it's a zoning that would allow for like the daycare use to continue. There are uses, you know, office-type uses that are permitted under that zoning. The facility, as we understand it, as State Bank Trace and Sienna Parkway, has been leased out to office use as well, so it'd allow them to be able to use it for that non-residential purpose, but not open it up to, you know, more intense commercial retail purposes.
So to your knowledge, nothing in this zone is LC-3?
No, no, no.
And nothing in this ordinance, if it passes, will it allow for an LC-3 unless it goes through zoning?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? It's been a motion by Mayor Procham Klausser, seconded by Councilmember Marulus. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Well, thank you. I just want to, before we jump onto item nine, I just want to recognize Sheriff Fagan, who's here. Sheriff, thank you so much for coming. I know you had another event, you just slightly missed it, but I know that our, our Chief Brandon Harris is here, so you just met with him?
Did you speed here? Just asking.
Minutes ago, but I've known him and of his history in the past. I think you made a great choice. He'll be a great asset to Missouri City and a great asset to Fort Bend County. We'll, we work collaboratively together, and I know we'll work even better now that you have Mr. Harris as your chief. I think y'all made a great choice, so congratulations, and again, I apologize for being late.
Thanks for being here.
That's all right. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Item number nine are ordinances, 9A.
9A, an ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations regarding the contract authority of the city manager, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Thank you. We have a presentation by Elena, our Assistant City Manager.
Good evening.
Good evening. This item provides the city manager authorization to execute separation agreements that do not include monetary compensation. As currently written, the ordinance establishing the contract authority of the city manager requires council approval for all separation agreements. Approval of this amendment will ensure that routine personnel decisions are handled efficiently by streamlining the process and avoiding the need for every separation agreement to go through the full city council approval process. This will save time and resources both for the city council and city administration.
All right, well, thank you. I see a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Marulus. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 74 Parks and Recreation of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations regarding granting recognized sports association designations, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation by Donnie Hayes, Director of Parks and Recreation. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come and speak to you guys tonight. This, this change is a fairly simple change to this ordinance. It changes the approval process to go from being approved by the Parks Board to being approved by the director. It allows us as a department to be a little more flexible, a little bit faster on the approvals for our RSAs, and so we would definitely love to see an approval on it.
All right, thank you. I see a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 10, our resolutions, 10A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of a fiscal year 2025 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor through the Houston-Galveston Area Council to fund the purchase of ballistic windshields, ballistic driver doors, and ballistic driver windows for certain vehicles utilized by the Missouri City Police Department, and containing other provisions related thereto. City Police Department, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Thank you. We have a presentation by Rachel Murray, recognition and compliance coordinator. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is a grant through the Office of the Governor. It originates through HGAC. It is a grant that we are very excited, hopefully, to apply for. So our fourteen slated new Tahoe's, we are hoping to get ballistic windshields, as well as driver side door and window in all fourteen new Tahoe's. In the amount of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. I know that the current company that we have the bid from, Dana Safety Supply, is currently outfitting all of DPS's vehicles with ballistics windshields. So we are hopefully following along with that.
Well, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you so much for the work that you do getting these grants. Can you just elaborate what that means, just so the public understands what ballistic windshields and the driver side doors actually mean?
Sure. So we got a grant last year for ballistic shields for officers, so that they have ready shields to go into a situation that should require them. So outfitting our Tahoe's would mean the front windshield would be ballistic, meaning that it stops bullet from coming in, but officers are able to fire out should a situation arise, as well as using the door. And we chose the driver's door versus passenger door, obviously, because the driver, that's where the officer is sitting, but they can use that for cover as well, should a situation come up. And so both the door and the window would be covered by bullets flying. And I was actually told today that Dana Safety Security will give us a free replacement on the windshield if, in a situation where an officer does have to fire out, or somebody has fired into the vehicle.
We hope that that never happens.
Hope it never happens. But we want our officers to be prepared in case it does.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, and I too, thank you for applying for the grants. I think my question is more so for city manager. Do you foresee that this would be something that maybe we could, in the future, outfit all of our police vehicles with?
Definitely.
Okay.
And that's why we try to use grants first, to make sure that we're leveraging our resources, but absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
And that's what we hoped as well, that being able to put these fourteen brand-new ones, since they are not in our fleet currently, that we want our newest vehicles to be outfitted with them, which is why we chose this. And that way, fleets moving forward can hopefully put that in their budget for new police vehicles as they come up.
Smart. Thank you for doing that. Great idea.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Klausser, seconded by Councilmember Emery. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Emery.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item, our, wait a minute, ten B.
Ten B. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of a fiscal year 2025 Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant, application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor through the Houston-Galveston Area Council to fund the purchase of rifle-resistant body armor for the Missouri City Police Department, and containing other provisions related thereto.
All right, thank you. Rachel Murray?
Good evening, again. So similarly to the JAG grant that you guys just approved, is this one is specifically for rifle-resistant body armor. Our current armor is not rated for rifles at this point, so we are hoping to upgrade. This will include all of our patrol division from our lieutenants and down.
All right. Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
And again, thank you, long time no see, since the last agenda item. But my question is, what caliber does this protect our officers from?
May I interject really quickly? There's certain information that we would recommend
Okay.
not being placed in the public's.
And if I may, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So disregard the question. Thank you.
Okay.
That information I can get to you. It is part of the grant application as well. It has that information in there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item ten C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Edison Arts Foundation, Inc., for the Missouri City Black History Celebration, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and making certain findings relating thereto.
All right, thank you. We have a, Donnie Hayes, Director of Parks and Recreation. Donnie, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. So this is a contract that would lay out the, an agreement between Edison Arts and also the City of Missouri City. Helps to lay out those responsibilities of responsibility, I said responsibilities a couple times, lays out responsibilities for this, the Black History Month event that we'll be doing throughout the month of February. So this is a great opportunity for us to show how this partnership has truly affected the community, and allows for Edison Arts and the city to have a partnership that will happen for years to come as well.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Mayor Protem Klausser.
Yes, if we have the Carters who are with the Edison Arts Foundation, can we have them step up? I have a few questions for you. And I want to, so you're sending your better half up here, I see. That's what I said, he's sending his better half up here. I want to say thank you so much for your commitment to continuously making the Black History, our Black History Month a success, and all the blood, sweat, and tears that y'all put into, and we appreciate you all being great partners to Missouri City. There are a lot of activities that are listed for the month, as we usually have. What I would like to know was, are there any changes, notable changes, from last year to this year? And, so that's my first question, and so I'll let you answer that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and happy birthday, Mayor Ellicott.
Can't hear you.
I said, happy birthday, happy birthday. I'll sing later. Yes, there have been some changes. One of the things we saw that, a couple of the activities and events that we were having on multiple days, we tried to streamline and voluminize the events to where more people are coming to one, and they're not missing the kickoff, trying to come to the wine tasting that happened maybe before the kickoff. So we're trying to streamline and bring those events together, and maximize our volume of community and stakeholders and business partners and representatives there. So that was one event, so we combined that event. Also, we're incorporating authors and artists at this event, so we're highlighting some of Missouri City's fine talent. Dr. Rashonda Tate is launching her book, Queen of Sugar Hill, so that's an event that we get to showcase that. And then a new event that we are adding is our Shades of Brilliance: Inspiring Stories by Young Authors. So the theme being authors and artists, we have invited school-age students between kinder, excuse me, kinder and twelfth grade. They submitted applications, Fort Bend ISD participated, and helped us present this information. And so we were able to select seven qualified, wonderful submissions, and we have put their work together in almost two-hundred-page anthology, which is a collection of these stories. And so that's a new event that we, that we are excited to showcase our young authors and to present this red carpet book signing release for them on one of the events.
Okay, awesome. And then my last question is, these are a lot of events that require a lot of detail. What is the plan to make sure that you are sufficiently staffed all month long for every event, to make sure that the events go off as planned?
Thank you. I'm so excited to work with, so this is, this is new to Donnie, but it's not new to us in Missouri City, and we've been doing this since the inception of the Black History Month celebration in 2015 with the late Councilman Don Smith. But with Donnie, he's so, his attention to detail is stellar. And so each week, we've been meeting for the, for a couple of months now, or actually, we started last year, but we've been consistently meeting each week to go through the run-of-show for every event, and the details, any specifics, from, you know, mics to AV to everything. So I think the teamwork that we didn't always have, because, you know, because of the relationship and because of the, the commitment from the city, we're able to really partner and work together to make sure that the dream work is provided in this teamwork. And so I'm excited about that, and thank you for, Mayor Ellicott, for allowing us to, you know, propose to enter into this contract to help this, this celebration better because of the team.
Yes, thank you again.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. I was captivated by listening. But I want to say, really, a comment, and I have one question. Just want to say thank you so much for continuing this on, and congratulations, Donnie, you have now met the force to be reckoned with for Black History Month. But you guys seem like y'all have, y'all making a great team, and I'm looking forward to all the events. So my question has been posed to me, I'd like to pose to you guys, is how are with all the events and the change of this venue to this venue and the addresses, how are we making sure that participants know what day, what location, what the theme is, and where they're going to be at, so that we don't have, you know, various flyers floating out there, and people thinking that that's one event, but yet there's multiple events? How are we streamlining our, our marketing for that?
Well, I can, I can take that one. So we have been working with our communications department. They, Andre attends every single one of our Black History Month meetings. Number one, the source of all information is always going to be our website. And so that way, the website has every detail on it, saying where the location is, what time it is, what the expectation is for each individual event. And so then, when we do a video, or we do a social media post, or anything else that is part of our marketing plan, we will always point everyone back to that website. So that way, we really always just have one major source of information, while at the same time, we're helping to give additional information on our other social media platforms, our other forms of marketing.
So breaking down to me, just a little bit tighter.
Yeah.
Are you going to have multiple flyers for different event? Are you going to have one big giant flyer? To keep it simple?
So currently, we have individual flyers for individual events. Because there's, there's too much information for each individual event to have a major flyer, just, it would just, it would clog things up too much. And so, for example, like on social media, one of the things that we will be doing is having events that'll be built out for each individual event as well, so that way, we can be specific about the things that are happening. For example, at the Freedom Walk and the family reunion. So we want people to be able to know, okay, Freedom Walk starts here, it's going to be at Community Park, it's going to start at 9:00 AM, we're going to start from this point, go to this point. Here's a map to be able to see where that start goes, where we'll end, also where you can park your cars, how to drive into the park. So we want to be able to give that kind of detail, but be very specific to each individual event, while at the same time, the website has one page for Black History Month, but then has all those individual flyers for each individual event as well.
All righty.
Can I add to that? Is it okay?
Of course.
I love the fact that, you know, growth is what we represent, because we were able to see that, okay, these are the challenges, that we had maybe different things circulated, or we allowed something to come up that maybe wasn't genuine. And to prevent that, like Donnie said, we have one source, and we love the fact that communications is involved in that. Every flyer that we all have is the same flyer, it's been approved by communications, it's gone through the city or, our, um, um...
City manager.
Thank you, city manager, don't kill me, I'm sorry, Angel. So they've approved that, so we're all using the same source of information, and then that information is on the city's website. And so when we send out anything in social media, we're all using the same information, and we can tag that same link. So we're all on one accord, and that's the beauty of, of the growth and the unity of us working together that I'm excited about.
Good, thank you. And that just solidifies the great partnership that you guys have made, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had some questions, Donnie, and good to see you. I just had some questions about our responsibilities in a couple of areas, and I didn't quite understand, you know, what we were agreeing to here. On the wine tasting kickoff, it says ticket sales for the senior theater trip and for Edison Arts theater trip. What does that actually mean?
So one of the events during the month is a theater trip that we take to, we're going to go see the piano recital.
The piano lesson at the...
The piano lesson, yes, the piano lesson, which is an event in Houston. And so there's two different opportunities for people to be able to experience that event. One way is they can go with our senior program through Parks and Recreation, that will be provided, they'll have a bus ride that will be provided for them, and so they can purchase tickets through that, which will be managed by Parks and Recreation. Now, for those folks that do not need the bus and want to be able to take their own transportation, maybe they want to go to dinner or lunch before or after the event, they can purchase tickets from Edison Arts on their own. And so it's, although it's one event, has two different ways for us to be able to do that. So on the kickoff, we are providing a table where folks can come up and be able to look at both options, and be able to purchase their tickets at the kickoff.
So it's not a commitment for us to purchase tickets? Because I, the reason I say it says twenty tickets under the theater piano lesson?
Right.
Twenty tickets will be sold through Parks and Recreation? So I didn't know if we're...
So those twenty tickets are our responsibility to sell. And so that, on average, when we do this event, this type of event...
These are city tickets, they're not...
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I thought it was stating that we were not going to be providing any, it would be in-kind contribution, but then I saw a ticket sales, so I didn't know if we were committing to purchase certain, certain amount of tickets or coming out with a financial obligation.
Right. And so this is, this is an event that we do every single month for our senior program. We always take our seniors out to some sort of musical or play, and so this is just another one of our programs. It just happens to be we're partnering with Edison Arts on this one.
I just wanted to make sure that when we say in-kind, that we don't turn around and show that we were giving some finances out. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can I add to that? If you don't mind.
Thank you for pointing out that, in collaboration and recognizing what the Parks and Recs already did, they're providing their senior trips. Why not continue that senior trip in the month of February, right? To the, one of the historic theaters in the City of Houston, that's a black renowned theater, which is the Ensemble Theater. So we thought it would be a great opportunity, continue what Parks and Recs already does, but instead of trying to do a large amount, do a small amount and grow from that. And so that's why that twenty, because that's what they would commit to anyway for the seniors, and they would just purchase that through the city.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. I don't have any questions, I just want to just make a comment to city manager. Appreciate the fact that you took into consideration to put some sort of a contract in place that would help, because Missouri City has been fortunate to have Juneteenth celebration, you know, started by, of course, one of our former council members, and that's been taken off, and then, of course, when it became national holiday, everybody wants to do it. So the, you know, in celebrating Black History Month, we in Missouri City has been also, as you heard, 2015, with the same person, former council member Don Smith started this. And I think with any partnership, we have a lot of partners, HEB, we have so many different partners, that helps the parks, helps, you know, other departments, especially with our, a lot of our events. And I'm glad to see that, finally, that we have Edison Arts Foundation, who's done a lot of work last year and the year before, especially the new thing that we started with the Freedom Walk to the Tree, and now with our Freedom Park actually coming, you know, to groundbreaking and all of this. To see this partnership grow, and to council member, to Mayor Protem Klausser's point of view, I think there's a lot of interest in it, so we saw for the past two years, it has grown. So keep that in mind, the facility, the area where we're at. So as, I have a feeling that this will grow even bigger than what we anticipating to be, and at that point, continue to work with the city. And Donnie, your department, Danielle, the whole team, communication, Andre, the whole team working together hand in hand, and it's a great thing. I would just ask one thing that Mayor Protem Klausser just reminded me. Last year, there was a flyer that had all dates in one. Not, not to say that you can't have flyers individually... that had all dates in one. Not, not to say that you can't have flyers individually, but I, I, I do recall that too. There was a one flyer. And that kind of helped us to see, you know, on a kind of quick, high level where everything is. So if y'all can create something like that too, um, so that, that would help the people. Or, or instead of us forwarding six different flyers.
Yes.
It might just help to, and if they want to go and see details, they, which they could. But if you can have that, that would help as well.
That's actually called our Black History Month calendar. Do we have our Black History Month calendar on, Greg? That has all of the, um, I think we do.
Okay. So if you go back and look at it, I mean, that was just a, uh, the, just a comment that I make. And I commend you for coming up here and talking to us about it while you're the significant other just sitting back there.
He's just the driver.
He's still licking his wounds after the Cowboys got crashed.
He's still sour. Go Texans.
There was a game.
Yes, yes. Hey, you can't talk. I'm gonna hit this. At least charity came up here and spoke. Well, we love you. We thank you. I don't know about that guy. Make sure he's back soon.
Thank you.
All right. There's been a motion by Councilmember Riley, seconded by Councilmember Emery. Uh, seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you all. Item number 10D.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, granting consent to Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 129 and the Fort Bend County Levy Improvement District Number 19 to annex certain land situated within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Missouri City, Texas.
We have Shashi Kumar, Director of Public Works and our city engineer.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. I have a very short presentation. Um, as, uh, you read in the resolution, there is a consent, uh, there is a request for consent to annex about 7.4 acres of land by Municipal Utility District 129, MUD 129, and Levy Improvement District Number 19. Uh, this piece of parcel, you'll see in the next exhibit. I have a picture. It's located smack in the middle of, uh, the district boundaries, the subject district's boundaries. Uh, just to give you a little, uh, uh, orientation, it's just located east of the Laurel Glen Assisted Living Facility on Oilfield Road. Uh, currently, MUD has the, has only the ability to provide utilities and so does the Levy Improvement District. It provides drainage and needed detention to support this development. So it's not feasible for city to extend these services. Therefore, we're recommending that you consent to the annexation by these districts to develop this tract of land. Now, as you can see here, the green parcel that you look there is the MUD 129 boundaries. Uh, the pink is the 7.4 acre parcel, which is located right in the middle of this tract. Uh, and you also see where the LID 19 boundaries are in the next exhibit. Again, the, the pink area is the 7.4 acre tract and the LID boundary is here. And this is, uh, located in the ETJ of the city limits. And there is no way for the city to provide these kind of services. With that, we recommend the consent to annex. And I had one of the questions come in this morning as to what is the tax rate by this district? Upon our, my research, MUD 129, it's 22 cents per $1,000 valuation. And Levy Improvement District is 34 cents per dollar, per $100 valuation. With that, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Uh, seeing any motion, uh, there's been a motion by Councilmember Marulis and seconded by Mayor Protem Klausser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Shashi. Thank you. Item number 11, our city council announcements. Uh, we'll go ahead and start off with our, a large position one, Councilmember Sonia Brown-Marchon.
Thank you so much. Um, I want to send out a sincere thank you to our Public Works Department, um, led by Shashi Kumar, of course, our city manager, our mayor, everyone that was involved, including our essential employees, um, over the, um, uh, the cold that we experienced earlier this week. Um, the communication efforts that you guys put out even towards council so that we could understand exactly what was happening, it was most appreciated. And I appreciate all of you guys for working so hard and so diligently. I even had an opportunity, cause I did get out on, um, Tuesday a little bit and venture out. And it was cool seeing one of the trucks with the granular rocks in the back. And there the guys were working, putting, putting the stuff out. So I really do appreciate you guys getting out there, doing that. I want to send a big congratulations out to Missouri City's very own Ellie Bro on becoming the winner of in the Miss America Pageant on last Sunday. I got an opportunity to kind of dip in and out of the program because it was online. And so it was really good. I mean, she really, really represented Missouri City well. And I was just extremely proud to see that young lady, um, just grace that stage with such incredible grace and style. It was amazing. I want to send a big thank you to the Missouri City NAACP branch for hosting the annual Martin Luther King Breakfast on last Saturday, right at our very own city center. Um, we trickled in kind of slow because of the weather, but we did all show up there and it was a grand celebration. Um, Ron Reynolds put on an outstanding keynote speech. And, um, it, it gave me great hope for many things that we still have to do as a, as a nation, as a community. And so I was glad to be a part of that. And, uh, Jeff Bonney, shrimp and grits. We do put sugar on grits.
No.
Okay. Yes. And lastly, um, well, I have two lastlies. This week is National Name Calling Week. It is in, you know, hey, I, name calling, name calling is a direct erosion of trust and healing opportunities. And when people approach us and they call us names and they say horrible, horrible things about us, I would encourage them to just watch the things that come out of your mouth. You know, I, I just do. I really do. And here's my lastly, lastly, Happy Birthday, Mayor Robin Allicat.
You know, if anyone else say that, I'm gonna have to do this.
Happy birthday.
All right. We go to position, a large position number two and Mayor Protem of our city, Klausser.
Yes. I'm gonna get this out the way. Happy birthday to Mayor Ellicat. Yeah. Um, I couldn't imagine a, a better place that you'd rather be on your birthday than with, than surrounded by us. So happy birthday to you. Um, I attended the, uh, Lake Olympia Annual Meeting, uh, along with, uh, my colleague, council member, uh, um, see, and now I'm getting like you. Floyd Emery and Mayor Ellicat.
You've got a few more years.
As you can see, we all like each other. And Mayor Ellicat and the staff. I want to tell you that that was probably the best run, uh, annual meeting in HOA that I have ever seen. And kudos to, uh, Jason Mangum for the flow. Kudos to the directors who presented and presented efficiently and quickly and answered the, uh, residents' questions. So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, I also, um, attended the send-off for Ellie Bro and I wanted to congratulate her on being the runner-up, but she's always number one in our book. I attended the Men for Change Gala at Quail Valley and presented a proclamation to them, uh, for 30 years of granting scholarships to college students in Fort Bend County and hearing from some of the scholarship recipients and their successes and what those scholarship dollars mean to them. Um, I also attended, every, every year I attend a, uh, Martin Luther King, uh, Day of Service or, uh, some type of service project over the weekend. Um, I attended, um, I didn't get a chance to do anything on the actual day, but that weekend, my daughter and I made donations to the Palmer House through Jack and Jill, the Missouri City chapter. Um, and we made some significant donations so that, uh, some other families would have food on their table, clothes on their back. Um, and I also want to remind everybody, our next Small Business Advisory Committee mixer is February 13th at 6:30. And this time it will be at Quail Valley. And last but not least, I want to wish, uh, my sorority sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated a happy 116 years of service and sisterhood. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Uh, recognizing, uh, District A Councilmember Monica Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. And happy, happy birthday. Too late. I already said it. Um, I too want to congratulate, um, Ms. Texas, Ellie Bro. Congratulations to her. You've represented, um, our city well. Um, and thank you so much for all that you did to go out there and, uh, and get that crown. I mean, we wish you all the best on your future endeavors as well. Want to say thank you, uh, personally to our Parks, uh, Department, our Public Works, and especially to all of the people and the staff that had to be out there doing this, um, hard freeze the roads, our police department that responded to the calls, our fire department. And I wanted to say thank you to our city manager and staff that had to be kind of on call and work. Um, that is always a very difficult time when we, we're facing, um, you know, a freeze or, uh, any type of catastrophic possi- possibilities. And so I just really appreciate you guys for being on standby and also educating our residents on what to do, how to do things, how to wrap their pipes and how to be prepared. The text line that you guys were sending out, everything that y'all were sending out, I was sharing out. And so the residents are so grateful for the hard work that y'all do every single day and especially during difficult times like that. So personally, thank you so much to every person, um, in every department for all of your hard work. Um, I want to conclude, um, with my other comments by saying thank you to our Missouri City, the Senate Tea and, um, na- na- I was gonna say National Honor Society, the NAACP and having another successful, uh, MLK Breakfast. Uh, I too, Ron did an absolute wonderful job with his, uh, unprepared speech. We thought it was going to come from our keynote speaker, um, but he was over there eating grits with no sugar. Um, but thank you so much, NAACP. We're looking forward to the work that you do. Had an opportunity to meet with, uh, Herman, um, and on some of the Texas Parkway stuff. Thank you so much. This morning, uh, Shashi and, uh, Jason and Donnie for meeting with our residents in Quail Green West to help them look forward to resolutions for their area as well. And then lastly, um, I want to say happy Founder's Day to, um, the Sigmas, uh, the Phi Beta Sigma celebrated their Founder's Day this past, uh, January 12th. Shout out to my favorite Sigma, uh, Mr. Larry, the legendary black man of District A and the Fort Bend Sigmas. Uh, so that's going to conclude my, oh, and happy Founder's Day, AKA, uh, the beautiful present over there, uh, sitting on the dais. So thank you so much, everybody, and have a wonderful and safe rest of the month.
Thank you. Recognizing District B Councilmember Jeffrey L. Bonney.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm not going to wish you a happy birthday until the end. I want to say congrats again to Chief Brandon Harris. You know, when people show up for you like that, it's a testament of the impact that you've had on their lives and their respect and how they feel about you. So it was indicative today of, uh, the impact that he's had on people's lives as well as how people view him. So congrats to him again on a well-deserved chief position here in Missouri City. I also want to thank the people in Public Works, Shashi, your team, Chief Partita in the Fire Emergency Management, Tremika Jewitt, uh, Police, Chief Harris and his team, City Manager's Office, Communications Department, Andre and your team, for the response to the weather situation, as well as the mayor, uh, who takes over in these emergency conditions. Uh, all stepped up, uh, once again, to ensure that our residents were safe and also communicated to. Uh, I also want to give a, um, huge congrats to Ms. Texas, Ms. Texas 2023, Ellie Bro. Uh, I too attended the send-off and was sad that she, uh, didn't take the top spot, but we're proud of her for coming in first runner-up. Not just runner-up, first runner-up.
First runner.
Uh, you know, it makes a difference. Uh, also want, uh, I attended the Texas Parkway Cart, uh, Cartwright Community, uh, meeting with, uh, colleague, Councilwoman Riley, uh, Men for Change Gala, uh, with Councilwoman Klausser, uh, attended the Hunter's Glen Five, a monthly meeting, as well as, uh, we had a HGAC Board Composition Meeting. Uh, we had to move our, uh, meetings, just like this meeting. Uh, we'll have ours tomorrow. And I'll be joining that with Council, uh, Member Emery. Uh, also attended the NAACP Annual MLK Breakfast with all of my colleagues, as well as the city manager in attendance. Uh, I also want to give a huge shout-out Founder's Day to the January Babies and the Divine Nine. That is the Kappa's, uh, Kappa Alpha Psi, January 5th, Phi Beta Sigma, January 9th, Delta Sigma Theta. I don't hear nothing. All right. January 13th, the AKAs, January 15th. I don't hear nothing. All right. And, and Zeta Phi Beta, uh, Sorority Incorporated. I don't hear nothing. All right. Oh, well, come on now, January 16th. And once again, with my last 30 seconds, uh, happy birthday, Mayor Robin J. Allicat. We wish you a happy birthday. Last 25 seconds, we want to wish you a happy birthday like no other, Mayor Allicat. We want to wish you a very happy birthday.
Time's up. No, I'm just kidding. All right. Thank you. Uh, recognizing District C Councilmember Anthony Marulis.
I'm not sure if you guys have heard the Texans slogan, uh, Texans swarm. For the Cowboy fans out there, they don't know. But, uh, I was out on Tuesday and it was Missouri City, Texas swarm. PD, FD, I mean, Public Works, everybody was swarming out in the streets, making sure we were safe. So I want to say thank you. There was a lot of people in the back office who did a lot of work that we didn't see. Thank you. Uh, it was truly a, a really great feeling to know that we, our socials were going live. It was informative, it was timely. A lot of members mentioned today, uh, residents were very appreciative of that. So I just want to say thank you. Um, Donnie was probably out in his shorts because in Alaska, in Alaska, it was summer, right? But, but again, thank you. Um, happy birthday, Mayor. Go Texans. Happy birthday, Mayor. And, um, I was just very, very excited to see how many people were here, uh, for Chief Brandon, for the police department, for this community. It speaks volumes. And I guarantee you, there's not another city that had this happen ever. And I'm proud to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Uh, recognizing District D Councilmember Floyd Emery.
Well, I also want to, uh, uh, give appreciation for all the hard work that the city, uh, put towards the, uh, cold weather that we had. But I also want to specifically, uh, thank you for working with Fort Bend to set up warming centers. Uh, I'm not sure how many of our Missouri City residents, uh, took advantage of that. But again, uh, you know, with the, the weather, the way it was and some of the outages, uh, I, I think that's something that we need to always keep in mind, is giving, uh, the opportunity to go to a place to stay warm and, and maybe get some food. I also attended the, uh, MLK Breakfast. I thought I was going to be, you know, on the, the, uh, you know, the front row, but uh, some guy came in a little bit later and, and, you know, took it away from me, but, uh, he did a good job. So, but, you know, he's not the, uh, uh, the, the speaker that we have sitting with us, uh, here. But, uh, it, it was a great, uh, event. Uh, thanks to, uh, the, uh, Quail Valley City Center for the, uh, setup, the decorations. I think the food was excellent. And, uh, for those who had shrimp and grits, there was, if you wanted sugar, there was always a packet of sugar right next to the, uh, on the table. So you, you know, uh, do it as your heart desires. So, but it was a great, uh, turnout and, uh, some, uh, some great, uh, messages that were brought from, uh, the, uh, participants. I also attended the, uh, annual, uh, Lake Olympia Meeting, uh, annual meeting. Uh, and kudos to, uh, the, uh, the staff for all of their presentations. Again, it was an efficient, uh, presentation and one that, uh, Missouri City can be, uh, proud of that we're, uh, always prepared and, uh, prepared well. So thank you again to all of the, uh, uh, staff that were involved in that. And also finally, uh, the Chief Brandon Harris, uh, you know, we couldn't have done any better than what we did. Uh, we took one of our own, which I think is something that we can be proud of. We didn't have to go out, even though we tried and get somebody from the outside, but we found that we had someone who is more qualified and better qualified than one of our own. So, uh, I thank, uh, uh, Chief Harris for, uh, stepping up. And I, I think we've got a great... And I, I think we've got a great team. And finally, I'm not going to say anything about a birthday. All I'm gonna ask is how old?
With that, I close my remarks. That was a killer. All right. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for the birthday wishes. I'm one that doesn't really speak anything about birthdays and anniversaries and anything like that, but I'm very humbled by that. By the way, I am 25. Reverse that back.
Is there, is there a times factor?
If you reverse it, you'll get it. But let me just run through this real quick. I want to thank Mayor Protem Klausser for stepping in for to, for Ellie Bro, for giving her a beautiful send-off and then giving her the key to the city. Congratulations again to our Police Chief, Brandon Harris, and his family. I know that the citizens will be proud of what he's gonna do with the department. Cold weather, I want to thank Councilmember Boney for joining me for one of the video conferences that we had. All the departments, I mean, if I'm gonna start naming one, I'm gonna have to name all of them. But I want to thank every single one of them for getting out there and working. Both of our chiefs, our Public Works, and you name it. Every single department, IT to Communications, all of you, thank you so much. And I want to thank NAACP for allowing me to have the welcome remarks during this, during the breakfast that we had here. And I ended with this. Someone just sent me a picture about two days ago. And I opened it up and I didn't understand what that picture was, which was a review, a side of, a side-view mirror. And when you look at that picture, all you could see is back and it's empty. So, I texted, I sent back saying, what is this about? They said it's a reflection, which means look back in the mirror and see where you at. The laughter that I see today amongst council, the fact that I hear laughters among staff who are here today, the number of people that came today for welcoming our new police chief to our City Manager now being here for past a year, to our City Attorney, to our City Secretary, to all the department leadership and directors and every single staff that works here, to doesn't matter what position you do. 2024 is a reflection of what we have done in the past, but we'll, together, as our credo says, together we excel. If we work together, think of all the opportunities that we can get done in 2024. So, I want to thank you for your time. And I want, I want to thank you so much for your time and thank you for working here at City of Missouri City. Today's a great day. Today's a great day, not because it's of what's on the screen, but today's a great day because we just saw the, the love and the, and the people from our neighbors and our neighborhood coming out all in supportive of this city. It took a lot of work from the senior leadership team. It took a lot of from the leadership team that, that's here within the city and all of those you manage. But I have, I'm optimistic for 2024. There will be several things that we can achieve together, and I think we will. So, for that, on this day that, that I turn one more year older, I want to say thank you.
Can we get a picture with you?
No, no, no. Item number 12 is a closed executive session. Time is 8:05 PM. And the City Council will now go into a closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Thank you all. The time is 8:24 PM. And the City Council is now back in regular meeting. There's no action items on this, from this. So, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:24 PM. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Birthday, Mayor. Happy Birthday.